Good evening, everybody. We're calling the meeting to order. If you would, please join me in a moment's time. Thank you. Stay fully pleasurable. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
District five, Mr. Runyon, here. District three, Mr. Lowell. District three, Mrs. Six, here. District four, Mr. Mason.
Here.
District five, Mr. Klein.
Here.
District six, Ms. Shatwell, here. District seven, Mrs. Comer, here. District eight, Mr. Fox. We have four.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Same.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Citizen comments, we have Ms. Jones. She's signed up to speak. Ms. Jones. No? Okay. Nobody else has signed up, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Huskin?
Good evening, everyone. It's always great to see all of you here and for those of you all that are joining us on the YouTube channel or... And it's great that we have that option for everyone. We have so much to be excited about as we prepare to open school this week for everyone in our elementary, middle school, and also next Monday we'll be opening the high school, middle school, and our elementary schools have had their open houses. And the energy is just, you can almost feel it when you walk in. The parents and students, everyone came and met their teachers, seen all their classrooms. Our buildings look fantastic. Thank you to all of our maintenance and custodial staff. Huge shout out to all of them because it takes so much. I don't think people really realize what it takes over the summer to get our buildings ready to open school again in just that short turnaround time. Again, our classrooms are instantly, it's almost like once I launch the theme, shape it in our future, one masterpiece at a time. We see it everywhere and everywhere I go, it's all over the division. We're super excited about that. And we, it was really in full force last week at our complication. Our speaker, Sam Glenn, he was exactly what we needed. He got our attitudes right for the year. Our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Howell, she and her second graders, her former second graders, they shouldn't hear me say that. I'm sorry, kids. You are now third graders. I'm sorry about that. She just inspired us. Another special part of that was Matt Robinson. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Matt, who built and donated our buddy benches. We can't wait to see those out on our playgrounds. That was just really special on his heart this summer. He built those benches. His focus really is to reduce any hint of bullying and just to raise awareness about mental health and where we all know how important that is. But just, just big thank you again. So, in case you haven't heard, new high school. You might have noticed it. I don't know, but it's coming next Monday. So, I keep saying, guys, we have nothing to do but celebrate that accomplishment. And I think a few folks joining me up here are gonna celebrate that. Of course, are there still things to do? Are there still folks scurrying around over there like crazy? Absolutely. But what I keep saying is, guys, it's like we took a trip to Hawaii. Our plane landed on time. Our luggage, all those boxes, landed on time. So, if anybody wants to fuss, okay, so maybe you forgot to pack your favorite outfit. But look around, we are in Hawaii. So, we're not gonna hear it. We're not gonna fuss because we're all there. It's just, it's just amazing. So, remember, anytime you wanna hear it, anytime you hear anybody at the plane, look at it. We're in Hawaii, folks. We're in Hawaii. We're good. That's all we're gonna say about that. We're just gonna keep everything moving forward. That's all we're gonna do is just keep moving forward. And as Ms. Howell's students reminded us, they threw these little balls into the crowd last week. And those, all these little balls, don't give up. No matter what happens this year, we're gonna just keep saying it. Don't give up. So, here's to a great start to our school year. Let's get it done.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Crazy that summer break didn't, it seemed like we were just having a board meeting and it was starting. That was a really, really festive short break for you all. It's been a pleasure to be after several meetings as you guys kick off the new school year. I attended the new teacher breakfast on July thirtieth. It was a great event. You know, I'm not on social media a lot, but you hear how there's a massive turnover in our schools and people are leaving droves. And, you know, the school system employees, nine hundred plus people, had about forty new hires. Forty new hires.
Thirty.
Thirty-fiveish new hires. I think it says a lot about our school system, says a lot about the work environment that many of you all create in our buildings to keep our employees here and keep them happy. So, great job to you all. And it was about the same over last year, right?
We'll get that later.
You ever take, you ever take, you ever take? Great to see everybody at complications, as Dr. Huskin said. Appreciate you putting a smile on your face. It was the second day, but you all look pretty happy, I gotta say. Sam Glenn did do a wonderful, his message was spot on and very well received. I heard nothing but great things about him, about his presentation and what he put on after his speech. We're gonna get an update on the new high school a little later. And I won't take away from that, but I think Dr. Huskin and maybe Principal Davis said it that today if you don't mind, Ms. Comer.
Hey, everybody. Good afternoon. We are so excited to tell everyone the great news. We have passed all of our inspections. We are getting ready to...
We will be open as promised August the eighteenth. And we're excited. Teachers are ready, they have their rooms all furnished, and we're excited to have students back. And also, just this afternoon, we're gonna be sending out messages, communications that's towards our orientations, that's towards our open house, traffic pattern and all that will be coming to you soon. So, please be on the lookout for all of that information that's coming this afternoon.
So, guys, we just wanna send a big, giant thank you to our school board, to our board supervisors, to everybody in this community. Because guess what? We could not have done this without this entire community. We are absolutely, as promised, thank you Shocky Construction, thank you Griffin Parker, thank you to everyone. We are on time, as scheduled. Thank you to Otis, our building inspector. Oh, my goodness. We are absolutely so excited. And you know what? Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Davis. I'm in the store. We're going on in. We'll see you next week. Thanks, everybody.
Now, great, now, great. So, we will be open on Monday. Will we be open on Monday? Yep. I'm all over the place with my comments. There's so many good things happening in our county. Big congratulations to the darlings of the county and world champion Dixie Darlings. I doubt that very many people in Louisiana could find Halifax County, Virginia on the map prior to a few weeks ago, but I'm pretty sure they can find it now. Pretty sure they can find it now. So, great job to the ladies and to the coaches. They did a great, great job. Lot of good news and I guess a little social news. I guess many of you all attended the board supervisors' meeting last week and they put it on agreeing to release our money to pay for the sports complex. At the meeting on August fourth, Chairman Clay said they wanted to verify the funds that we have available and they would be prepared for a move on the nineteenth. Had several conversations with their chairman. Talks are going well. But I will say, as I said here tonight, we do not have a date set for that meeting, to be able to go with the numbers. I texted him at four o'clock today, so we'll see where that goes. Early on in this project or conversation of a project, I was told by two board supervisors members that we need to operate within our budget. Seventeen point four million dollars is there for us to spend on a sixteen point six billion dollar project. So, as I say, the lines of communication are open, but we do not have a date set for that meeting at this time. It's way over the, way past time to do what's needed for our state analysis. Well, thank everybody that came out on the fourth to the meeting and look forward to your all support on the nineteenth when they meet again and hopefully we'll have that vote, so. In closing, hope everybody, teachers, principals, and most importantly, our students have a great start to the school year and have a wonderful, wonderful year. Mr. Clay?
Well, I normally don't say anything, but I'm gonna take this time to point out transparency. The public needs to know that the funding that we have available is off the one percent sales tax and money that we have left that has to be used on the high school project. You hear out there that your property taxes are gonna go up. It's not gonna be because of the athletic project. We've got the money to do this. Transparency. People need to understand, you cannot use this money for anything else but school projects. I think there is some misconception of the money can be used for other things than the school system. But it's not. It's gotta be used for the school system. So, we need to do what's right for our kids now while we got the chance. And hopefully we can make that happen.
New student representative, Mr. Lopez. Thank you for joining us tonight. I know school hadn't started, so your report may not be what it always will be, but welcome and tell us what's happening.
Good evening, Dr. Huskin, Chairman Mason, Vice Chairman Clay, and all of the school board members. My name is Johanna Bashi Lopez and I have the honor of serving as a student representative on the Halifax County School Board. While I didn't grow up in this community, Halifax has become a place that truly feels like home. I've experienced firsthand the dedication of our teachers, the support of our peers, and the strength of our school community. Every day, I see the potential of the days within our classrooms and the passion that drives us forward. I'm proud to represent the voices of my fellow students and help shape the future of the school system that is working and inspiring. That's why serving on the school board is personal to me. It's not as simply a role I hold, it's a calling. Every decision we make is more than a line on an agenda. It's an investment in the lives of our students, in the strength of our families, and in the future of our county. Right now, we are standing at one of the most transformative moments in Halifax County's history. I have seen the pride, the traditions, and the resilience that defines this community. I've seen parents working hard to give their children a better life. Teachers going and welcoming on for their students and neighbors rallying together when times were tough. Those values, hard work, unity, and hope are the foundation of Halifax County. And now, with the construction of a brand new high school, we're building on that foundation in the most tangible way possible. This is more than a replacement for an aging building. It's a promise. Our promise that our students will have a safe, modern, and inspiring place to learn. Our promise that we will equip them with the tools they need to drink bigger, work harder, and reach higher. This new school will feature bright, modern classrooms filled with updated technology. Science labs with curiosity can turn to discovery. Art spaces for creativity and flourish. Athletic facilities that will inspire teamwork, discipline, and school pride. And all of it designed with safety, efficiency, and accessibility in mind. This fall, as we welcome students back, we do so knowing that we are just a week away from a new chapter. A chapter where opportunity will need preparation and where our young people will be empowered to shape their own futures. When the doors of that new high school open for the first time, it won't just be about building. It will be about a community coming together to invest in its children. It will be about honoring the past while embracing the future. I am incredibly proud to be part of this journey and I cannot wait to stand alongside all of you as we watch our students walk into a space that was just for them. A space that says without words, "We believe in you." That moment will not just mark the opening of the school, it will mark the beginning of something extraordinary for Halifax County. Thank you.
Being a girl. All right. Anyway, without saying, I do believe, wow. Ms. Comer? School safety committee report. Do you all have a meeting on the twenty? Okay. Come on. Join facilities met July twenty eighth. This way in, this way through.
We did. It, I think you kind of had us earlier. We just presented the board supervisor members that are also on that committee. All of the information that was just up here on the screen, just so that they would have a detailed report of the finances that, of the cost of the facility that we have received and then also of the funds that we were presented that we had. So, I guess we'll just wait until the nineteenth and see what they say. We foreholed for an answer that following week. We did not get that, so.
Yep. Ms. Lower? Anything to add?
I would only add that the members of the board supervisors who were in attendance, they showed overwhelming support and appreciation for the design. I think they were very appreciative of the work that the school board did to come up with a design that stays within budget, meets the needs of Halifax County. They did some very support.
Thank you for those reports. The tastings.
All right.
We have before.
Have many.
Of course, I appreciate it. Four minutes of work. I'll talk about it. While we are not gonna leave you to tears, we hope we are gonna build on some new things that you are super excited about. So, good evening, Dr. Huskin, Chairman Mason, Clay, the rest of the school board. The, our shirt made, by the way.
So, my name is Jeremy Satterfield. I lead the Techmark Initiative across Southern Virginia for Microsoft. About four months ago, we had a conversation with Ms. Rosa Dunn, Ms. Donna Payson, in the back about bringing an educator bootcamp series to Halifax County. There are similar programs that are available. The Institute of Advanced Learning and Research has one in Danville, but it's not solely specific for Halifax County. So, we had a conversation and it was very positive and we said we're gonna go through with this. So, we did a whole lot of legwork in a very short amount of time. And what we're gonna present to you tonight is the basis of that inaugural bootcamp that we had here in Halifax County through the seven innovation of Microsoft, the Higher Ed Center, as well as Halifax County Public Schools. While we were beyond excited to kick off our first year, I thought it went amazing. These five individuals behind me are gonna hopefully contribute that to you. And at no expense to the school system, by the way. And we had partners along the way, which we're gonna talk about as well. So, real quick, I think we're gonna introduce ourselves. Which one's five? Charles Lawler, ninth grade counselor at high school.
I'm Joe Vaughn, transition coordinator at the high school.
I'm Rosa Dunn. I was at the Higher Ed Center when all of this started. I'm now with Explore the Trades as Connections Coordinator.
Jimmy Popek, marketing, Halifax High School.
Julia Sally, go tech instructor at Halifax County Middle School.
Tammy Switen, seventh grade, Adams County, Halifax County.
Brian Seath, Halifax High School, landscape teacher.
Brent Duffer, Southern Virginia Higher Education, H-back instructor.
And Melanie Hastings, CTE director.
So, over the course of the week, we first got a chance to see what is the current state of Halifax County. So, we had representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, the County Administrator's Office, the town of Halifax, and Halifax County IDA come and talk to us about what's currently going on in the county. And then we got on our tours of all the different businesses. We went to Hyperion X, Comfort Systems, TMI, Gloucester, DIR, Mid-Atlantic Automation Solutions, HNM Logging, and a solar site from Dominion Energy.
And we're all speaking on some of these, but we start with, did you do your best today? That was something that was specifically mentioned by one employer, but all of them echoed that. And of course, just, did you do your best today in your job? Did you just come in and get by or did you put in effort to the best of your ability? And of course, that's something that was not only the employers didn't expect it just of their employees, but they tried to live by that as well. And of course, as educators, something that we should be trying to do and encourage our students.
Are you a real good marketer? Dr. Huskin, Chairman Mason, members of the school board. And I'd be remiss if I did not recognize Ms. Runyon, who I knew as Ms. Johnson, who was doing online. She was president of the Marketing Deca Club in two thousand and seven, first place in district competition among five high schools for the Deca competition, qualified and competed in the state Deca events. And then she finished up with the two thousand and seven Halifax County High School Marketing Student of the Year for her academic achievements and her job performance.
Thank you.
It's always good to see my former students. And when we went to this bootcamp, as they call it, I saw two other former students. Julia Sally, who you'll get from in just a few minutes, and Brent Duffer, who'll come right behind me. Brent and I are gonna talk about how Halifax is engaging in a global scale. So, bear with me just a second here. International trade, imports, custom brokerage, licensed by the U.S. Treasury Department, exports, freight forward, licensed by the U.S. Maritime Commission. Absolute versus comparative advantage, tariffs, quotas, embargoes, interdependence of nations, political, legal factors, cultural factors, economic factors, technological factors, and infrastructure. These are all key terms we use in the class. And they're abstract. For most part seventeen-year-olds, probably don't really care what they hear. But when we got to go out and visit these industries, we got a greater appreciation for these, we got to see it in action, we got to apply these terms, and it became more concrete to us. One other, a task I give them, they were given like this, we gave them like this. Fourteen strategically critical mineral reserves of the United States. You know, we can find in the statistical abstract of the United States. And we found out that one of the industries is a, they're using this exclusively. Some of the mills that are on there. And when we went over to Hyperion X, their website says aims to be leading developer of substantial critical mineral and critical material supply chains in the United States. So, and one of the ones that are still on this, they're using, so we got to interact with them to answer a lot of questions we had. And I have a short summary is basically the week I spent during increased my scope of knowledge and brings the day to my classroom discussions. And now I have Brent.
How do I bother you so?
Now, we went to the bootcamp, first, he went to a bootcamp of different facilities. When he left high school, it's one we step off the bus and some of y'all are boot prints down here. If you don't know, I'm talking about the United States. We ain't come. So, he'll tell you from overseas, we have a club there.
All right, so, Peter, thank you. If I don't address all you personally, but yeah, of course, thank you again for this opportunity. Small town individual, marine floor veteran, seeing both sides of this foreign lands, you know, travel and stuff. I never realized how large scale Halifax really was. The global events ripple through the most remote corners of the world. That global economy is much like a tight knit teams that we got to work with, where performance usually takes precedent. They drive on interdependence, aware that I never could have told you at seventeen. Each nation, each market is like a gear in a larger machine, something I can talk about. Our success and struggles that link across those borders, small towns, the price of goods, available jobs, even the cost of energy is shaped by forces beyond our control. International trade deals, all the way down to those geopolitical tensions. Understanding those interconnections, is it just a matter of economics is a reminder that we're all part of something bigger where actions, one part of the world and have a major direct, sometimes profound effect on everyday life here at home? So, again, thank you, guys.
Good evening, everyone. I am Julia Sally. I'll be talking about attendance, I'm sorry, attitude, attendance, and effort. But I would just like to go ahead and thank Melanie and everyone else who got this together. It was truly a very enlightening experience. If the other teachers have this opportunity, I encourage you to take it and jump in. So, we visited a lot of different companies, but one thing that really stuck out to me is when we visited Gloucester, speaking with one of their managers, he pointed out three keys to success to me, and that was attitude, attendance, and effort. So, attitude is how we choose to approach challenges and opportunities. It's what sets the tone for everything else. Attendance is about showing up, being present, reliable, and ready to contribute. And effort is simply doing your best no matter the task and taking pride in your work. What was powerful about this was this was Gloucester's message. We heard this, business after business, over and over. They told us, as long as employees show up and try their best, they are willing to take on that person, train them up, help them grow, and even open new doors for them in the future. If we can instill these values in our students now, we can teach them the importance of attitude, attendance, and effort. We're not just preparing them to get a job, we're preparing them to succeed at whatever path they choose. Thank you.
I want to speak on collaboration and cooperation. One thing that we did keep hearing was attitude, attendance, and effort. And even the HR manager over at Gloucester says, you know, if we can't further a person here at this factory, we want to at least...
we want to at least uplift them, so when they do go down, down the road or go to another job, that, you know, we feel like we benefited them, benefited the community. They also spoke very highly of the school system coming out, doing this. Of course, we were talking about the different needs and things of what the students need, because that's what this was all about. Really surprised us, they say that a lot of them are actually thoughtful. So, the different factories, you know, not just on 58, but you know, we went to some on 58. They actually collaborate and talk about what they need, you know, for their employees coming in, you know, which we're building in students. So, it was a very worthwhile experience. They talked about, you know, sometimes avoid the league even competition, and that's just kind of the nature of the beast. But one thing that stuck out was they all said they wanted everyone to be better. They wanted them better than themselves. It was a very positive experience, and I hope it can continue for another year. Thank you.
Good afternoon. So, I'll be talking about pay for performance, not the job. And I want to start off by saying that I was actually in awe of the issues that we have on a global scale. I was born and raised in Halifax, and it was actually eye-opening. You hear a lot of students who come through the middle school and they say, when I graduate, I'm leaving here. There's nothing here for me. And there really is. There are industries that are willing to invest in them if they're willing to invest the time and the effort in just to grow their skill. So, pay for performance, not the job. This was something, actually, the person who met us from, what's that place?
TMI?
No, Comfort Systems. He talked about how when he comes to the career faders, one of the first things that kids ask him is, how much do you make? You know, and he says, you know, they don't understand that what I may make thirty years in is not what you will make coming in. But what Julie says, if you're willing to put in the time and the effort, if you are willing to work on work, if you're willing to listen and collaborate with others, there is room to elevate. He says, you know, he didn't go to college, but he was able to buy home. He was able to put all of his kids through college working at Comfort Systems. So, there is an opportunity here for the students to be able to elevate. There is a starting point. A lot of them have options where they would actually train you, so it's not even coming in having that ability. It's coming in being assertive enough to try to sell yourself that I'm here, I am willing, I am able to put in the work and the time that it takes to learn this job and other jobs, not just what's in my job description, but other jobs to be able to be a well-rounded employee so that I may have an opportunity to go up the ladder later on. So, I thought that was, I thought that was really enlightening. And personally, what I took away from it is that, you know, we have to sell Halifax, because Halifax is a great place to live. It's a great place to raise your kids. It's a great place to go to school. It's also a great place to work. Thank you.
Alright, so my fault was my expectations. And one thing I say when we kept going around, no matter what job title it was or what they were doing, soft skills kept coming back. Now, some of the jobs, like we talked about, some of the jobs, you walk in doors with good soft skills, they'll hire you, they'll, they'll put their work in. You got that work ethic and everything. But some jobs, you know, automotive, automotion type things, or BRR. Some of them was like, well, you gotta come in here, no, like, you know, you don't want me working on your car. I teach kids, but I can't walk you through. So, you gotta have that base knowledge coming in, and then after that, you know, they, you guys are, well, that's like thirty days, you gotta see what we're dealing with, soft skill blocks. So, my point was my expectations and like taking this back as an educator, like as transition coordinator, be working with students, trying to prepare them better for the next step in life, whether it's college, trade school, or you know, going to get a job, helping them make those connections. Is when we're, thank you for talking to teachers, just make sure you're modeling those expectations. You just can't teach soft skills, you have to live them. So, what I say is, you know, we tell students, soft skills like effort, communication, and reflection, they matter, right? But are we modeling ourselves? So, when you look at yourself, every action is a chance to lead by example. When we show up prepared, own our own mistakes, and push through tough days, we're not just teaching content anymore, we're teaching character. Alright, small moments send big messages. Sharing struggles with purpose shows resilience. Reflecting out loud makes reflection real. Alright, so when we live these values, students absorb them, not because we just said so, we tell them to do it, but because they saw us do it. Alright, and that was one of the biggest things I talked about in the, thank you, give myself a little cap of that. Because of the coach, I talked about it in the thing, I was like, when I'm dealing with adversity on the field, if I'm telling my players, hey, you don't run your mouth, so I'm like, you can't do this, you can't do that. What does it look like when I come up and I do it? Then I'm kind of like, well, the coach told me not to do it, but then he's doing it. So, I always try to think of that when I step on the field and I don't agree with something. Well, if they're looking at me, so I gotta do something that I tell them to do. So, that was the thing I was gonna say, soft skills aren't just nice to have, they're essential. And every company we visited says the same thing. The technical skills might get you in the door, but the soft skills determine whether you get to stay. They'll open that door, but it might not keep you in there. You grow and leave in some fields, soft skills are even the first thing they look for, because they can train the rest. And at the end of the day, we talk to our students, talk to all the other educators, and like I said, I'm gonna share the experience. Anybody ask me about it, I'll definitely tell them about my experience with this. And how I want to relate that to the teachers, and make sure teachers understand to take those little tasks, to do those things, for students to model what you tell them to do. Because if we want our students to thrive in a competitive world, we must commit to more than just teaching these skills. We must model them daily. That's how we prepare them, not just for tests, but for life.
So, this is just sort of a listing of some of the technical skills that we saw when we went out into the workforce. And so many of them overlap from one place to the next. And it just is really important for our teachers to see that what they're teaching in the classroom every day directly relates to the skills that the students will need in the workforce. And having the new building and having updated equipment allows our students to be that much more competitive on, on the competition to get a job, because they trade on the, on the equipment that they will experience in that workforce. So, just some technical skills that we saw over and over. And then again, on the next slide, the soft skills that show up place after place. And the inclusion of this picture was intentional here. It's not the official picture that made it on the cover of the magazine, but it's one that I snapped that day. It's never too early for us to begin teaching and modeling those soft skills for students and talking about career exploration, talking about the opportunities that are available here in Halifax. So, it's a week that was really impactful for me, I know, and I think I can speak for the rest of the group, and I hope truly that it's something that we can continue. So, so what now, I borrowed a phrase from Dr. Husken, you know, it's just as important to us, and join me, join me Jeremy, it's important to us to be able to continue this, and we, we talked about, you know, just this first year and the feedback that we have gotten already, and tweaks that we can make, and thinking about other groups of teachers that we should include, I mean, our math teachers, our science teachers, our elementary teachers. This is an experience that we want to take and give to as many people as possible. And the worst thing that could happen is if we took all of our learning and just let it end right there. But I know that's not gonna happen. The ripples from that one week in July are gonna be seen for years.
Yeah, and the whole purpose of this was to strengthen the coordination and the relationship between employers and teachers. You know, a lot of times, these teachers that are working, you know, those eights and seven thirties to fives, they don't have time to get out and meet some of these employers. So, we kind of force it upon them. Collectively, I will say for Rosa, Melanie, and I to reach out to set these up, not a single solitary employer turned us down. Every employer that we reached out and said, this is a long time coming, we've been waiting on this, we can't wait to be a part of. We had one that had to back out because the mill was down, but they begged us to do it again next year. So, hopefully with your blessing, with the approval from the inaugural cohort right here of seven, who were fabulous, by the way, attended and engaged. We forced them onto a bus, but nobody seen them. I think I was picking them up.
In the July.
And he did. And he did. So, we put them, and once again, that was intentional. We wanted them to have that conversational piece between industries. And there was never a downturn, and everybody was engaged in talking the entire time. You know, Melanie, Rosa, and I, first of all, those two ladies did ninety-eight percent of all of this planning. But this was far better than we ever thought it was gonna be for year one. We're super stoked. We hope that we get the blessing from you guys moving forward to do this. We know this crowd of seven is gonna take it back to their teachers, their educators that they're a part of, and sell it for us, and we hope to have another fresh crop for next summer.
Thank you. And we also just wanted to include, I'm sorry, just include a big old thank you, because there were so many hands. Jeremy Sullivan, self-sure, he did a whole lot of the legwork for us, but also the Innovation Hub for hosting us all week. That could not have asked for a better place, and hence all of our lovely Innovation Hub shirts tonight. Mallory did so much of the work there. The visitor center coordinating that, blessed to get us from point A to point B. All of the many places that we visited, and all of the local restaurants that we were able to have wonderful food from each day of the week as well. So, it was truly a team lift that was very much worthwhile. So, thank you for letting us share.
Thank you all for that.
Any questions?
Yep, any questions? Anybody else want to say, say anything nice about Ms. Runyon?
That's the way I had some of his kids.
Thank you all. Mr. Ellsworth. Updates towards?
I was gonna say, can we talk?
Everybody tried to eat them the night.
Yeah. But good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me back here. As you can tell already, there's a lot of excitement in the afternoon high school opening next week. And so, I'm gonna start off with setting a huge milestone on the project, which was last Friday, we received a final certificate of occupancy to be able to use the school, so it should probably be did. Here's the, some other updates. We made sure all the stack boxes were moved over from the old school to the new school. A week ago, so the future showed up on August fourth, they just started unpacking their things in their rooms and their spaces. The majority of the classroom furniture is in, is in place already. The cafeteria furniture on the inside is all there. On the outside is a patio area. That furniture has been installed as well. CTE equipment is being installed. So, that's, that's great. The theater is all finished. I got some nice pictures of the, of the auditorium, I'll show you here in a second. Someone asked about what's that concrete being poured out from the west side of the school? That's the concrete slab for the greenhouse. That's already been poured, and we're waiting on the greenhouse folks to show up and install the greenhouse. And I also got pictures of the parking lot is all finished stripe, and actually been, and ready for students to come back. Some of the milestones remaining are, there's some classroom furniture that's gonna show up, it's gonna be here at eight AM on the Thursday, the fourteenth, which is huge, because the open house is starting in the afternoon, fourteen, we run all the furniture here. So, there's a hundred and ninety-two chairs that will show up on Thursday morning, I think, in place. We're working on to get the small appliances delivered to the school, and they're all set for the first day of school, which is next Monday on the eighteenth. So, things falling into place. A couple of things that we're still working on, we're still working to finalize the trophy cases that are going to school. Figuring out how big they need to be, do they have lights, if they have lights, some of those kind of questions that we have answered right now. We released the enhanced graphics package for the school, and so those are being, those are in process. We're still waiting on our dedicated windows being installed, and we'll look back when we have that. But that's what we're going to fantastic when we have to wear. Regarding the existing Halifax High School, we're still working towards revolution starting soon. We have received a survey report for the abatement of the asbestos in the school, actually this morning, so that's under review. We're working on having a surplus sale pretty soon on what's left in the school. That'll have to start, I think, in a couple of weeks. I heard they'll be on site starting to take inventory of, starting that process. And we're working on the invitation for bid, so that's got different, I said, told people, different pieces of a puzzle that has to go together to formulate that. The abatement survey, the surplus sale, some of those are the puzzle pieces. So, we're still looking to start that abatement demo this fall, and have all of that finished in the spring, soon as we get there. And then the exciting part of the pictures, this is the cafeteria furniture, the tables, the seating, all in place. This is the seating on the outdoor area. There are actually just a few things on back order being transcribed that still show up, but they'll be here soon. This is auditorium, which I think was pretty fantastic, and it's all finished. The curtains are up, projection screens there, all the seating, all the acoustics. This is if you're looking from the stage up. This is the media center. See with the furniture in place, just working to put the books on the shelves. This is in the CTE area. This is actually the electrical lab, so you can see where they learned their rough end electrical boxes and conduit, and all those things that we just got finished doing in high school. This is actually two pictures in one, so this is the parking lot, all of the striping, the numbering at the right corner, which shows you kind of what the numbering is, what it looks like. So, that's all in the, student parking areas, the bus lot, everything's been sharpened. And then there's that concrete slab for the greenhouse, which will be sharpened here. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
I just have one, sorry. Yeah, I have a question, I also have a comment. So, the projected savings, do you have that number for the project?
Yeah, yes. I think I saw that one slide that you showed. I will tell you that we're still reconciling the shaki on the product contingency number, so that number's gonna fluctuate just a little bit. But is that same number that you showed on that slide?
Okay, thanks. So, thanks for your involvement in this and the athletic project. And I think we definitely need to do something with the fields. I understand the need for athletic fields in this community. I ran track in college and coached to change the second place in state. So, as I reflect on the project, I think our board, I think I've overlooked a few steps. We requested proposals for renovation, and after we reviewed, we slipped over our top RFP, which was against a renovation and new construction for twelve and a half million. On June ninth, we voted to move forward with the new complex. And then on June twenty-sixth, you guys presented us with the plans and the final cost, which was about twenty-five percent more in price, and one major difference. So, I think that was the point of the process. We had maybe a beneficial condition viewed together as a board, because we voted on a complex without going over with you guys, without whatever the number were, and without seeing the final numbers. But that brings us to now. So, as a board, we have agreed on the sixteen point six million complex. And to look at cost savings, which I know there's a committee looking at. Any potential cost savings could help address other needs in our districts such as capital improvement, providing a safe space for PE kids in youth schools, and towards equipping teachers and classrooms. I've seen the Anisom wish list out there. So, I think it's important to seek the balance between this project and the fields and recognizing, recognizing broader needs in the community and schools. And I look forward to updating what the cost savings are. So, my last question is, do you know when we'll have a guaranteed maximum price?
Actually, I'm only involved in athletics, I'm only involved in new schools, so I prefer.
Well, first step is hopefully get our money to pay the sixteen point six, and then, and then we'll go work on that figure, can get it done. Ms. Runyon, you got a question?
I just have a couple of questions. Greenhouse, and you guys may, you may be able to answer this question for me. Will the greenhouse be equipped with electricity, lights, water access? Do we know that?
Yes.
No, that's. Yes, yes, okay.
It's actually, all the utilities are stirred up in the concrete, waiting on that.
Wonderful. Absolutely, thank you. We don't have a estimated time of arrival, do we?
We reached out to them again today. We told them two weeks ago, we're starting on that, and then it was four today, so we're trying to come up with an idea to explain.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Vaughn? I want to comment. I was going to, that you, anyone that I've heard from, teachers, administrators, everyone is just, I guess, buzzing with excitement. Just such a pride from what they, they see when they walk into the school. I heard from a teacher the other day that said, for the first time in many, many years, you could just see just a general excitement, just a certain energy. Not always there, but just the enthusiasm that's going to teach in your school and all of the efforts that you put into making the school a really solid building. So, that's one thing.
Mr. Box?
Yes, thank you, Chuck. What does the sound system, is that new in the auditorium?
Everything is.
Everything is good. So, maybe not top of land, the middle of land, or a little bit. Sound system in here, but it's quite like.
Initial?
Those could.
Oh, there's a lot of these in my.
Go open them. But, but it is good, it's good.
Yeah, I'd say that's, I haven't heard anyone complain about this case that I'm aware of.
I haven't heard of the scene yet, so I just want to know before I get over there and get shocked. See exactly what it looks like. So, that's really important, too, to believe in the narrative. Have a good sound system, we're gonna have active. living out acting, probably speaking, uh, really, not good.
Well, I'll tell you, there's a lot of, I mean, acoustical engineers worked ahead to make sure the panels and everything are in the right places, so, I'll thank you, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Cole?
The appliances that were supposed to go in the life skills classroom, have they been, are there now?
Uh, no, they're, do you think else? Thank you so much for all the updates, and for everything, and you just think, open, yeah, it is, it is, just once every forty years, that's it. Dr. Husky?
So I just wanted to share a little information with you all, with everyone, tonight, just as we opened school, um, this year, it kind of started as a question and a conversation, um, between some of us, and, and really with Mr. Neal, and Dr. Bucklue, and all of us, maybe, and Rick, to just kind of look at how, and really with those of us on the board, too, is, how are some of our initiatives working? And, because, because we try to put some of these, um, things in place to keep our folks here, again, stay with us, grow with us, is it working? Are folks staying with us, are they, are they growing with us, and how are we doing? And so, as we look back over the last few years, let's just take a look, um, to see how, but just the movement in general, so let's just take a look. As you guys know, we are the largest employer in the county, and we have, um, about nine hundred and fifty employer, employees, these are full-time employees, if you count our part-time folks and our cluster workers, we really, um, go higher than that, uh, more like eleven hundred folks that really are in and out every day. So we are truly the largest employer in the county. So, um, go back, just, you know, Dutch Cars told me one time, when you and I first met, you said, you sure aren't short on words. But anyway, and we really have been trying to do all kinds of things to make improvements on the overall presence of ourselves as an employer, and, and what are we doing to invest in our people? So let's take a look, because we know that at the end of the day, when our folks are happy, it impacts our children, and that's really why any of us are here, to make things better for our children. So, let's take a look at what the numbers, and the numbers really tell the, tell the story. So, um, overall, the, um, twenty-one, twenty-two, and we know that that was the year coming out of COVID. And if you look at the first column, that's the, the summer height, and that's when you come to the new teacher orientation, how many folks are sitting in that room. And then the second column is, how, during the year, the coming and going during the year, and then, how many folks resigned during the year, and then your total turnover for, for that year, and then the final column is your overall retention rate. So, overall, you know, you guys can, can take a look. So you see kind of a drastic, I wouldn't call it drastic, but a pretty significant reduction over the last few years in our, um, in our number of hires, and we're seeing that things are overall pretty good. We don't have a lot of movement, and so this whole, um, what's out there, oh, everybody's leaving, you're going to have some movement. People do move to other places, people do, you know, take other, you know, you're going to have, and people are allowed to retire, when you get to the end of your time, you get to retire, you know, we, we don't hold your ankles and make you stay, you get to the end of your time, so. And we wait until the end of a full cycle year to do that reporting, you know, we did have about thirty-five folks in the room for our new teacher orientation this year, but we'll wait, because there may be some other movement during the year this year, and we'll report on those folks this time next year, to see how that full cycle plays out, because we don't wanna give the number, oh, we had thirty-five, because we don't know what that movement will look like throughout the year this year. But, again, to be, you know, in the mid nineties, that's, that's pretty good, because, what does that tell us? So if you go, you know, our average turnover is less than five point six percent, and when you look at, as this compares to school divisions nationally, we're well below the national average, because it's between eight and twelve percent around, so we're, we're pretty good. So, again, you're going to have some natural attrition, you're going to leave. Again, you hear this sometimes in the media, oh, everyone's leaving teaching, no one's coming, but we're, we're also having people come to us, we're trying it out, you know? They're not coming to us in the way that they traditionally have come to us before, so we are having to reframe how we help them get through that process. Traditional teacher preparation programs are not as full as they used to be, so we are having to reframe how we're going through that process, but they are still coming to the profession. So, that, there is some good news in these departments, so, let's, let's go. So what are we doing? Stay with Halifax, grow with Halifax, the longevity supplements, all of the five-year, every five-year bonuses, we brought back tuition reimbursement, we are helping folks get licensed, so that they are not then incurring more debt to have to go back to school and take more classes, and so we're, you know, that shorter pathway to licensure through the I Teach program, again, you know, that alternative to certification, we have that great, um, special ed cohort, that we put a group of people, anytime you can go through a cohort program where you have people that you can rely on, and go through a program with, it's always, there are always better outcomes. And again, we are, for a small rural county, we are competitive. So, again, as we compare with other folks, and we look at our, our numbers compared to folks around us, we're doing pretty well. Again, because we know that stability builds our community, and builds our, and we're stronger, with less turnover, it takes a lot more, it costs us more every time we have to onboard, because they have to have a mentor, you have to pay that mentor, you have to have levels, and you have to, you know, you have to have more coaches, and, and again, it just takes more time and more investment every time we have to onboard someone new, so we'd rather invest, just like, just like all you folks learned out working with employers, we're that, we have that saying, you guys come see us next summer, we'll tell you about it, you know, come see us, and, and we'll tell you about what it means to onboard a new teacher, it's a full investment. Again, and we want folks to be happy, we want them to stay here, we want people to say, wow, I, I wanna come work for Halifax County Public Schools, and stay there for the, for the out, for the duration of my career, so. Again. Okay. But again, that's why, again, it's just, it, it why, why it matters, is that we also try to promote from within. We, we were not opposed to talent from other places, but anytime we can promote from within, you guys see that every time on our personal work, anytime we can interview and hire and promote from within, whenever I sit down with people, I say, okay, what do you wanna do next? What do you wanna be when you grow up? And what do you, what's your next job? Interview for your next job, because we just feel like we're not just filling positions, we wanna try to, again, grow our people. Any questions?
Questions, Dr. Husky?
I have a question, I just have a statement, um, you know, these are all wonderful things, and I just, I really hope that, that our staff has taken pride in these initiatives, because this is something that I believe you guys have worked very hard, um, to make available for our staff, and administrators at the schools push the stay with, stay with Halifax, grow with Halifax. I've spoken to a lot of teachers who, um, are not even familiar with what that is, so talk to your staff and let them know about, about that program, because it is a wonderful thing, and it's there for a reason, we want, you know, we want our teachers to utilize that. Um, I'm proud to be in Halifax, I'm proud to be a part of this school system, so.
We want, yeah, absolutely, we want people to take classes and further your education, and, you know, just, again, what do you wanna be when you grow up? What, what career opportunity do you want next? We wanna grow our own leaders, and, and all of those things, so, talk to your administrator, and, and, you know, we talked about starting a cohort of aspiring administrators, and all those things, so again, what's next for us, that's the kind of thing we wanna do next, because, again, all of us are getting older, so we're gonna need the next cohort of, of administrators.
Any other questions, Counters? Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Husky, this was a good evening, uh, last month, uh, we came aboard with three, uh, VSB policy updates, that's not the major, that's, um, grammatical changes that they wanted to do for the, for those policies, so I'd ask for a motion to approve those, so we can update our policy manual and, and treat it with.
I have a motion to approve that.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thanks, sir.
Pursuant to section two point three dash thirty-seven, District of Virginia, move the Board Committee to those meetings, considering the privacy of specific matters of paid personnel, the appointment for the nation's salary of specific division employee is authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven dot eighty-one. Protection of, of the privacy of individuals in pushing a matter of not related to public business is authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven dot eighty-four. And contracts, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews, obituaries, or offers, and discussion of terms or scope of such contract, for discussion, an open session, where ever so you affect the bargaining position, or associate strategy with public body, is authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven, by eight twenty, add in District of Virginia.
Motion on form, can I get a second?
Certainly.
Any discussion? All those in favor of concluding to a closed section, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Armed meeting in the chair.